So Rick, we are live on Facebook and recording now, so anytime you wanna.
Okay, it's almost time.
Six fifty-nine.
Yep. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. It's Wednesday, December 2nd. The time is 7:00 PM. Council regular session. Please allow me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will open it up for visitor comments. If you are watching or participating, please wave your hand, find the screen, put your thumbs up, wave your hand, and I'll allow a minute here to see if there are anybody out there wanting to have visitor comment.
Yeah, so I guess that means me now.
Yep, that means you know.
So I called, I was on the afternoon session to yell at Paul Rogal, and then the Comcast guy comes on, Tim Goodman, and it's like, boy, I should have said something about that because he made me way more mad than Paul Rogal. It's like, oh my God. I cannot believe that Comcast is setting their acting like, oh, we just want to, this is nothing to do with COVID, or we're gonna do this. Yes, because they're money grabbing greedy. It's ridiculous that Comcast thinks that they don't, that we don't need, and I appreciate the fact that you all commented, but it's ridiculous that Comcast thinks that, oh, everything is just fine. We don't need to have a president here. As someone, as probably everyone here who has dealt with Comcast and literally, literally spent four and a half hours on the phone, on home, trying to get hold of someone, trust me, it's a good thing they didn't have a building here because I would have gone there and probably with blowing up something because it was so frustrating. They have, Comcast has the absolute worst customer service. Absolute worst customer service, and then they, I think that now they can go ahead and say, oh, it's just fine. It's not. It's not. They, it is ridiculous that they think they should not have somebody here, and I would hope that you would full-heartedly reject the proposition that they don't need to have a customer service center here and that everything is just fine. Because if you dealt with Comcast or you've had any problem, everything is not fine. There's, it's horrible. I mean, it really is. The nice thing about Comcast is they have good products. They have horrible, horrible service. And sometimes the only thing is that you could walk into the building and they're, actually, the people in the building are not that great either, but they were better than waiting four and a half hours on the phone screaming at someone. And nowadays, with internet being a critical, essential service for them not to have presence here, then you know what? Maybe it's time to get rid of the franchise and have the city take over. There, you know, what Tim Goodman seemed to suggest was a good idea. It's like, yeah, let's just go ahead and do that. Go right ahead. So we're done. We'll take over their thing and have a city-owned utility because they're horrible. And the fact that what they, as you have Mr. Morton stated, they've already violated their agreement by closing the, their building when every other business has figured out how to be open. And yet Comcast can't figure it out and then claim that, oh yeah, it's such a small space. It's a huge space. You could play practically basketball in their area. They have a large area. They certainly could be open now. There is no reason why they shouldn't be. And if people knew about Comcast, I think there's a lot of hate in the community. So, and again, don't give that money. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brady. Okay, give it a second here for other visitor comment.
Yep, we have one more coming on.
Okay.
Hi there. I don't know how to get the video started. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
This is Rosemary Clement. I live at 155 South First Street. And I have to say that I've talked to several people in town, and we are quite disappointed that the space that you guys have rented for the haunted house has still Halloween garb up when it is now the Christmas season. And I think, and several people think, that getting all of that down and out by December 1st is quite a gracious amount of time to have that all removed. We feel hostage by the Halloween town for the whole year. We don't mind you having it during the season, but to have this still up is, I think, quite inappropriate for the city to not be respectful, especially for the merchants in town when they all have their windows and shops decorated and that's still all up.
Okay. Thank you, Rosemary. Other visitor comments?
I do not see any, mayor. Oh, um, nope, you're good.
Can I, can I finish? Can I ask why that is all still allowed to be up?
John, I mean, it's, we needed, it's a conversation, but it's not an instant answer.
There's no requirement for it to come down, but specifically, but we can certainly talk about it.
Well, I'm not saying that there's a requirement. I would just think as the city in a city rented space that you guys would be more cognizant of, you know, being aware that it does impact all of us, that we're taxpayers, we're voters. And, you know, it's not fair that we have to put up with the Halloween stuff year-round.
I think it's gonna be there year-round.
I'm sorry, Brady, you're, this is not a.
Not an open discussion.
Not an open discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, so Matt, any other visitor comments?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just as a follow-up, because I know that we've had other issues with doing stuff in that building, and we do usually switch the windows to make them more presentable, and it's possible that just with COVID and staff shortage and working from home that things are not as they would be in a normal year. But we don't know that because the person that does that is not in this meeting, and that's why we don't have open conversation. We've got to give people a chance to answer the question. That's just my two cents. Sorry.
All right. Okay, so moving on, proclamation, city council election results for November 3rd, 2020. I don't have that reading, so. Kathy?
I don't have it either. Maybe Matt can pull it up. Or wait a minute. I do have it.
It just dawned on me. Could you go ahead and read it for us, Kathy?
Sure.
Please.
Whereas at a general. Twenty, in the city of St. Helens, Oregon, the candidates for office of city mayor and council positions numbers two and four were submitted to the voters. And whereas the city council of the city of St. Helens has received the results of said election and has found as follows. The mayor had two people running. Rick Scholl was the incumbent with 5,466 votes. There were miscellaneous write-ins. Oh, there wasn't two. There was miscellaneous write-ins for three, that totaled 355 votes. Council position number two, Patrick Berkeley, 3,230. Mark Gunderson, 2,829. Miscellaneous write-ins, 87. Council position number four, Ginny Carlson, 2,0871. Jessica Chilton, 3,215. Miscellaneous write-ins, 70. And then it says now therefore I, Rick Scholl, mayor of the city of St. Helens, do hereby.
Do hunt too low. Yes, all that good stuff. And.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so I witnessed that, and it is said to be so. Okay.
Rick, a question. Is it possible to get the names of the people who were written in, or is that against the law?
You could make a public records request to the county elections department.
Okay, it is possible to get it. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure it's public record.
Thank you.
I'm just curious how many people wrote their dog in there.
Yeah. Mickey Mouse is a big winner on a lot of them, too.
Okay, so an amendment to our agenda is we are not doing our first reading in ordinance. So I'm going to swipe that and move on to resolution number 1903. A resolution adopting the universal fee schedule and superseding resolution 1874.
Move to adopt resolution number 1903.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1903. Council President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm an aye as well. Resolution number 1904. A resolution to set 2021 city public meetings and holiday closures scheduled for city of St. Helens council, boards, and commissions.
I move we adopt resolution number 1904 as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1904. Council President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, resolution number 1905. A resolution to adopt a COVID-19 infection notification process.
Move we approve resolution 1905 as read.
Back it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1905. Council President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, resolution 1906. A resolution of the city of St. Helens, or city council of the city of St. Helens, Oregon, authorizing extended enterprise zone benefits for a fourth and fifth year to Cascade Tissue Group, Oregon, converting a division of Cascade Holding US Inc., located in the South Columbia County Enterprise Zone.
Move we approve resolution 1906?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1906. Council President Morton?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye, lots of hesitation there.
Yeah. Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, approved and authorized for signature. Seven exclusive towing contract with Drake's Towing and Recovery. Eight letter of support to Port Westward rezone application.
Move we approve and authorize for signatures, items seven and eight as read.
Back it.
Second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded to approve seven and eight approved and authorized for signature. Council President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Appointments to city boards and commissions. I do have Claire Cat. I would like to appoint to the budget committee. Reappoint to the budget committee.
Also Michelle.
What?
Also Michelle Thomas.
And also Michelle Thomas.
Right. Both reappointments.
What committee is Michelle on?
They're both budget committees.
Really? I don't remember her. Sorry.
Okay, so.
I'll move to reappoint.
Okay, so. I made the motion. You're seconding it.
Oh, yeah, if you made the motion, yes, I'll second.
Okay, so I made a motion to appoint Claire Cat and Michelle Thomas to the budget committee. Key seconded, Council President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, consent agenda for acceptance. Ten, library board minutes dated October 12, 2020. Eleven, planning commission minutes dated October 13, 2020.
Move we approve consent agenda for acceptance, items 10 and 11.
Back it.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda for approval, 10 and 11. Council President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, consent agenda for approval. Council work session, executive session, and regular session minutes dated November 18, 2020, and 13 accounts payable bill list.
I'm over.
So move.
So we have, we have a motion by Topaz and seconded by Morton. Is that correct?
Good.
We're getting fast at this.
All right. Council President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. I do not believe we have anything from our work session earlier, Matt.
Yeah, we do, actually. We have one thing, and that is just the city council's approval for John to sign the Arca Form for the Bennett Building facade improvements, the phase one, which is just doing the window replacement.
Oh, yes. Well, I think, I think the, when it needs to be done, we had a pretty, a big discussion on that. And I think we could also reach out to potentially get a rebate on, potentially on some of those windows being energy efficient, so.
Yeah, I will look into that once we get the documents of what windows they are and that stuff. I'll have, make sure Jenny has that information to get to the PUD.
Okay. So would counselors.
Do we make a motion on that?
Yeah, yep.
I make a motion that John proceed with the necessary paperwork to redo the Bennett Building.
For phase one.
Yes.
Phase one.
And Keith seconded it.
Yes.
Okay. Council President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, I don't have a lot to report. I've been kind of sticking, you know, close to home lately. You know, this pandemic is definitely ramped up and is gonna ramp up. Thank God they got a vaccine out. You know, that's coming our way for those who choose to take it. And it just is what it is, and we're all in the same boat. And you know, what I can, what I can say is that all we can do is best we can by wearing masks. And for me personally, I wear a mask and I wash my hands and I try not to be close to somebody. So it's a weird pandemic. It just is. The unforeseen's are saying, assume that you're infected, even if you're not infected. Knock on wood, I've been feeling good. It is cold and flu season as well. So I hope everybody's healthy and staying healthy, and I think if you can, they say get out and get some exercise. I know it's cold, you know, but bundle up and get out there and get active. It definitely changes my mood. You know, my profession is landscaping and I work alone. And it definitely helps me when I'm out there. So I got a win-win with my line of work. Get a little physical exercise and get some accomplishment done and see the results of my work. So, yeah, I don't have a lot to report between last meeting and this meeting, you know. And I'll see everybody before Christmas on our next meeting, so that's all I got. Council President Morton?
Yeah, good segue into our next meeting. I would look forward to our committee report from our Parks Commission. People who are doing the trails and pathways are refining the urban renewal or the urban renewal, the urban trail and pathway throughout our committee, throughout the riverfront district. And I'm excited to hear that, their findings again. The Carmen Dunn heads that up along with Jerry Belcher and Elise Mann and Howie Blumenthal. So they've, they've been working diligently to get all their ducks in a row for that, for their presentation at our next, at our next meeting. Along with that, we have a Parks Commissioner who heads up the Dalton Lake Preserve, Lynn Pettit, and she gave me a call and said today is the day that our good Public Works crew gets to install the bench and bike rack and the kiosk at Dalton Lake Preserve on the north end, down by Columbia City, off of Fourth Street, down by our water pressure plant. And I, so I went down there this morning and saw Jeremy Furnish. I think we, that's, it should be a familiar name in our city. He's a sculptor who is keeping Kaskanai, giving Kaskanai so much culture these days with murals and, and his artwork. And he's, he's an amazing person. He did the bike rack. So if anyone wants to go for a really wonderful walk down at the Dalton Lake Nature Preserve, I hope you will, Kenny, you can enjoy a nice bench and if you care to. And there's another one that will be going in lower in the park. And it was, it was a beautiful day. No wind, sunny morning, and I really enjoyed that. The ambiance of Dalton Lake Nature Preserve is absolutely stunning. So that's my report. I'm just looking forward to the urban trail presentation. And moving forward, I'm also looking forward to bidding our two counselors a farewell. And that will be in our, our next council meeting or thereabouts somewhere. So you two shouldn't be looking too surprised. What is it? It's 20 years for you and eight years for Kenny Carlson. So much thanking you kind of early, but we'll, we'll celebrate your involvement on the council at our next meeting, I'm sure. So we'll do something. We'll find something to do, all right? And then I look forward also to, in a sense, embracing the new year just around the corner. Okay, well, thank you.
All right, Counselor Locke?
So Doug, you're assuming Ginny and I will be at the next meeting.
Well, if you aren't, if you aren't, you're not going to get the good toast, I'll tell you that.
We, we might be together socially distant with our, with our long straw.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I just want to continue on that. Everybody stay safe, and this, the next few months is probably gonna be the worst few months. And you know, if you wear your mask and stay safe, maybe you won't get the flu or cold either, which is kind of a bonus, you know? So, you know, everybody just kind of, we need to get through this phase. I know that, I found out the other day from my doctor, I'm, I'm part of phase one when they, when the vaccine does come out. And then I, I found out that OHSU is running a trial right now, so I might actually volunteer to be a guinea pig. You know, been a, was a guinea pig 23 years ago, so I've got, got a lot of, you know, reason to do it. So anyway, may, maybe I'll be able to find out whether or not the vaccine's any good, and then it'll be safe or not for you guys. So we'll, we'll see.
You've got a lot of guinea in you. All right.
Yeah. So that's about all I got. Everybody have, yeah, we'll see you next, next meeting.
Okay, Keith, Jimmy?
Well, I just didn't want to interrupt him, but just proven once again, Keith, you're open to new ideas. But I just, I'm not gonna go all COVID and all like weird on you, but the Rosemary brings to mind something that's been on my list since before I was on council eight years ago. If the city is gonna really support business, they're gonna really support business. And anybody that's in small business knows that retail does not wait until December 10th to start. And it's like, I've been singing the song that all the Christmas stuff needs to be up by Thanksgiving, not December 8th. It's like, we need to roll out the red carpet for Christmas, just like we do for Halloween. And this year more than ever because people want to feel joy. People put up Christmas lights the day after Halloween, and here we are still walking the dog around the block, you know, with, you know, dead Halloween stuff. And I'm all fine with the Halloween, and if it has to be up, it has to be up, but it's like, we need to be planning. We know people take vacation in November, so we need to plan that the lights need to be up by this date and let the public work schedule people to get the lights up or get a public-private contractor in here to get the lights up. Because people want to see their town open this year more than ever. So it's like, you've listened to me for eight years. I figure I might as well sing that song one more time. But it's just, you want to put out your welcome mat, just like in your home. You put up your nice Christmas tree. You put up your lights. As a city, we owe it to our citizens to put out our welcome mat. And, you know, and that's for every holiday and for every day, we should always be put in our, our best self-forward. That's part A. Part B is the planning commission that I've served on for eight years has two terms that, two commissioners have served multiple terms, and we will be interviewing potential candidates to make changes on the planning commission going forward. The council has worked very hard to make change in our community, and I think that we need to entertain new ideas for the planning commission as well. So we, the planning commission will bring those. We're hoping to bring that recommendation to the next meeting. We'll be doing interviews shortly.
How many outcomes did you guys get? Do you know, Jenny?
We got four, but there was two other people in the community that said they sent them, but one person I talked to, she sent it to the county by mistake. So I'm just, you know, it's like, I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence because the first time we ran the ad, not a single person applied. And so it's like, it's not a Supreme Court appointment. Somebody shouldn't serve on the planning commission for 20 years.
Yeah.
And it's no reflection on them, but it's like towns evolve and our community evolves, and we need to give other people an opportunity to serve. That's all I'm saying.
So Jenny, I've got a question.
Yeah.
Being kind of the liaison for Public Works, the mayor and myself, when do we tell our, our Public Works crews, in a sense, or when do we suggest that the Christmas decorations and the Christmas stuff that's up comes down? What's your, I know you're, you're speaking out against the, what's gone on with Halloween. What about the Christmas coming, decorations coming down?
Well, I mean, in, in the business community. Well, I mean, in, in the business community, people have, just like we have an event year, just like we have a load-in for Halloween, we should have a load-in for Christmas. And it's like, uh, it should be gone seven days after the event.
Okay.
You know, it's like Halloween's on the thirty-first, October eighth, Oc- November eighth, it should be gone. Christmas is on the twenty-fifth. I understand Christmas is a long weekend, New Year's is a long weekend. You know, my mom was always a twelfth night person, so it was always January sixth in our family, but lifelong Catholic, Catholic, excuse me. But um, I digress. But it's like, everybody tweets its own, but I mean, basic businesses says that Christmas lights are up before Thanksgiving and don't, and come down New Year's or shortly thereafter, not December tenth. It's like the, you know, the ship is sailed. We had Small Business Saturday, the Chamber of Commerce, Keep It Local. I mean, thirty volunteers in our community got out and really beat the drum for Keep It Local. And we don't even have our decorations up yet. They've got lights on the Chamber of Commerce building for the first time in I don't know how many years. They got a PPP loan to get a part-time director there to try to help encourage small business and help people find resources. It's like, we don't have to pay for things, but it would be nice if we came to the table. I mean, that's just, you know, that's just my thing. There's, if we're putting up lights anyway, what does it matter if we do it two weeks earlier?
But a week after Christmas, you, you would like to see them, you would like to see them down, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, people expect them to come down after New Year's. You just never know when New Year's Day's gonna fall. And I understand people have paid holidays and people have vacation, and we've got COVID and all this. You never know when we're gonna have a weather event. You have to be flexible. I understand if there's a water main out, they're not gonna be down there doing lights, but if you give Public Works the advance notice that expectation of lights are gonna come up by this day and come down by this day, let them work out their schedule. You know, they're smart. We have a very smart, very capable crew.
The council just needs to pick the dates, and that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I just think just like Easter, just like Salmon Festival, whatever festival you're doing, we really just need to look as part of our events, is that's what we've heard for the last four years as we've grown Halloween, is now that we got October down, how do we load the year around events and look at, what are we doing in February? What is this transition? How are we, what are we doing over spring break? And maybe look at a retail calendar and look at where events line up, where it makes sense. And how do we support these entrepreneurs, these businesses that have persevered for nine months out of Co- through COVID? You know, I know people now, their coworkers, family, friends that have had COVID, that have been in lockdown, that have been in the hospital. And it's like, people are persevering and we just need to ante up and just be there cheering them on. And I think having decorations up, keeping the spirit up in our community, being positive is the least we can do.
I, I just, yeah, so after Thanksgiving is what you're saying? Because I mean, I, I, I'm confused because we're just three days after the following weekend of Thanksgiving.
Well, this is what I'm, this is what I'm telling you, is like everywhere, I mean, the tree in every town but here lights in November. It lights on Thanksgiving weekend, and our tree, I don't, I, there's no tree down there as far as I know. Last time I drove around, there's no tree.
It's up today.
Oh, it just went up today. With COVID, I'm not.
There was a Santa Claus in the, in the square.
Yeah, with COVID, I'm not out and about, but normally like, just trying to make sure, I'm just trying to answer Rosemary's comment about putting our best foot forward and being prepared.
I got what she's saying. Yes, I got what she's saying uh as far as that stuff being in the window.
Yeah, cuz the um, the, the ship lights is not until the twelfth. And it's like, we can't, I know there's been years when it's like the eighth, ninth, or tenth before we get
And I wasn't trying to be critical of you, Jenny. I was just, I was thinking I lost a week because I was like, didn't Thanksgiving just happen and?
Yeah, it's really close to the end of the month this year, but and all the more, it's like every day matters to small business. You know that. You know, every single dollar, every customer matters to a small business, and they're doing everything they can. If they have to have curbside pickup and all this stuff, they wanna keep people enthused and supporting local instead of supporting online shopping. You know, wanna do everything we can. That's just, that's always been my mantra is, everybody is welcome here. And this is a wonderful community. Um, that last thing I had on my list, I hadn't talked, planned on saying, but I had a chance to meet a new reporter, and don't ask me his name, from the spotlight that he asked me okay, he was super, super sweet guy, and just his questions reminded me of all the good reasons why I ran for council. And what a wonderful team we have and how blessed we are as a community to have such great public servants. And he just reminded me of all the good parts, and I appreciated that. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Judy. Uh, Council Topaz.
I have a bunch of things. One of the things we've been talking about COVID, and if you can see my camera, that's a list of things that I got from Margaret. The governor and the wisdom of, from Salem, said, what are you doing for COVID, et cetera, et cetera? And Margaret looked at it and realized it was Kathy Payne's job. Kathy Payne looked at it and says, my God, it's everybody's job. So there's a number of different departments filling out that form. No single department has the, all the information needed. So we've got a staff that's been doing a bang-up job trying to keep the state government happy. That's just one thing that we have to uh realize that our people are doing a lot of work to keep the community safe and also filling out their paperwork, which may also be worse than the disease. Uh, this week, no, it was last week, I had a conversation with a City Council member from Scopus and discussing some of the common problems that Scopus and St. Helens has, along with the fact we tried not to get along with each other. And these problems were basically in the realm of what will have to be solved in the next twenty years. And for one thing, you know, we'd like to get rid of our rail switching yards. And they would like to kinda help clean up the railroad too. The railroad kinda reports to God. But if we could work on, we'll say, a midpoint for the rail yards. And the other thing, again, we're talking twenty years out, we really need a west bypass around Portland. And it should go through here. What happens if the rail yards and the bypass kinda join each other? We could make a shipping center out here in Scopus and Portland. Now, these are things that are, it's gonna take a lot of planning, a lot of politics, but the type of things that Scopus and St. Helens ought to work together. The sewer plan is another thing that would be ideal if we could work together. But somehow we have to get a dialogue going about what can be done and how it's, I mean, this is not simple and a lot of it's more politics than doing. Still a problem. Okay, uh, I, the other thing which upset me greatly, I just got a new iPad from the city. And as you all know, I'm not what you call computer literate. So I had my granddaughter show me how to run it, and I found out that the city's tracking me. And we turned off one of the tracking devices and I found out, oh, actually, my granddaughter found out, oh, even the pictures that you take are tracked. And somebody else uh looked into it and found out there's another tracking system in it, it needs a password, which only our IT people have. Uh, I brought this tracking business up to my attorney, and he says, don't use the iPad. One, they can interrogate it, they can turn it on and listen to you, or they can even watch your pictures. So if the staff can uh follow me and find out what's going on, I'd like to have kind of a, an idea that maybe the city council would have the same privilege of tracking the staff. Anyway, we have a problem with the I'm not gonna call it the personality of the computer, but the mechanism of the computer and how it's used, cuz it could be uh looked at as invasion of privacy, it could be looked at in other things, but we have a communications problem with that. So that's what I have to say was, the big thing is our staff is doing a lot of work, paperwork and other things in the COVID. We gotta talk with Scopus for long term. Somehow we gotta have a meeting system set up. And we've got a problem with communication. That's, that's it for me.
Okay, so uh I'm gonna have my go back. Um, I just wanna make it clear that um Council Topaz, you're not required to have that tablet that is uh supplied by the city if you would like to have it. I have the same one. It's a Apple tablet that you do, and I think Doug does as well. So my, my real go back was this, though, is that Paul Vogel, I forgot earlier, shared about small businesses and the grant three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars out there that only half the people are going after that applied, that are approved. They just gotta fill out the second little half. It's a lot of money. I don't know how we go about helping with getting the word out. To those small businesses, that all they have to do is actually, the money's there. The check will be written.
Rick, can we get a list of those people? So we basically go door to door and shake them up?
Paul might, Paul might have that availability, but uh um he did a presentation earlier.
The last time that they did this, they did two um of their coffee clashes, their Friday Coffee Socials. They did two weeks in a row and they pimped it, the chamber did. The last time they did that, and several people got PPP loans that way. So I mean, I think if the chamber promotes it through their, their Fridays, I think that that would help them, and Paul's connected to them, so I'm sure that they'll get it scheduled.
Well, they're not responding. The businesses aren't. And if we don't use it, we lose it, and the deadline is coming up real soon. That's a lot of money for Columbia County, and then there'll be a second go-around. He also reported through the county for uh, for the same businesses. So if you're struggling.
Talk to my friends.
Yeah, if you're struggling, i- i- if they applied, they, and were approved, they, it's there and ready, and he needs to get it dispersed.
They just need to pick up the, they need to pick up the cash. That's.
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much sign for the cash.
It's all there. Nobody, nobody picking it up.
So, and then uh, uh, my other one was, was the Christmas ships. I forgot to, this twelfth of this month, before our next council meeting, next Saturday, not this Saturday, next Saturday. Um, so two Saturdays from now, and we'll have the veneer property open for you to drive in and sit in your cars and watch Christmas gifts. We ask that, you sit in your car, so you're all social distance. Yep, that is on our website, and there is a drive-through Santee Claus. Uh, candy cane slide coming down the Courthouse Plaza steps with elves there that will be contactless too. A drive-through Santee Claus Square.
One more go back. Um, watch for the library, just um, Mr. Topaz, remember, um mention it, but the library and the rec center has having multiple releases of activities for people to do in their car with their children. So with Christmas lights and candy canes and treasure hunts and stories and all, so you can do it COVID-safe. So be watching the library and the rec department for those releases, cuz there's lots of family fun to be had um in a safe way.
I have a go back, Rick.
Yep.
You were talking about the Christmas ship and being in your car. Is it possible that we open up the uh veneer plant so people could park along the waterfront and see the Christmas ships there?
That is the plan.
That is what I said, yeah. That is the plan.
Okay, a- as well as behind the courthouse.
Yeah, it's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, yep, yep. So, uh, plenty of room. Go ahead, Keith.
Can I comment on the, the, that grant thing through the port or through the sea? Yeah, sea set. Uh, the worst case scenario is, is if they have to turn money back in, next time we won't get as much money to pass out. That's generally the rule, so we need to make sure those guys are getting their money.
Well, they have applied and done probably eighty-five percent of the legwork.
I know.
Part, the last part is just going and signing a piece of paper for the check.
Exactly. So, yeah, so we need that list of names and then give them phone calls or go visit them, one of the two.
So I'm gonna ask staff to, uh, I will be following up staff this kinda, John, if you could uh spearhead that, just any way we can help promote it or, or help get the word out.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. All right, so anybody need to go back? John, do you have anything you'd like to say before I close this up?
When you first started the meeting, you, you pulled the Comcast franchise agreement off the agenda there, and I see Tim Goodbent's on the call here. I don't know if he had something you wanted to follow through and talk about, or if you wanna save that for another time, or?
Well, uh, um you know, I think yeah, if he wants to, if he would like to share something, but we just, you know, our discussion earlier, the, the council kind of, um, you know, uh, would like to talk about the proposal that they're proposing for our community, we find it unacceptable. Um, and we would like to further some talks. So I'm not gonna start with the way this process works. Once I start a first reading, I have to go through to a final reading, and it has to have a vote, which um, it didn't make sense when the, the numbers aren't, in my opinion, aren't there, and um and the rest of the council just had a census of not wanting, they wanna, they wanna work with Comcast.
Yeah, it happened rather, you did it rather quickly, and there wasn't an available explanation about it, so I just wanted to kind of go back to that issue.
Yes, so, uh, well, it, it, it is, it, it kinda is, you know, one of um my decisions that I am allowed to make, and that's what it wa- was the basis of it. And I know I have the support of the entire council via our discussion earlier. Correct, council?
Yes.
Yes.
Doug, Jenny was the only one who wasn't there, so.
I, I, um, I actually called in and talked to somebody, so I actually support the, with the council's actions.
Yep, so uh, we'd like, we'd really love to sit down and have some further talks. At least, you know, it can be modified. We'll, we'll just sit down and talk, but now is not the, the place to try to, to do this. So, John, uh, maybe you can get, reach out to him tomorrow and just let him know, you know, a little bit more.
Yeah, we will do that. And I just, it kinda flashed.
I don't think it was a secret.
I think you've given it a good, good amount of attention here, so.
It wasn't a secret earlier what we were discussing. It was an hour, over an hour discussion in our earlier work session, just on Comcast and the agreement. So, all right. Well, thank you. John, anything else?
I have a go back. Uh, it's a question for Sue Nelson, and I've been approached by uh several people wanting to know what the issue is on Gable Road and Columbia Boulevard with the culverts uh on uh being replaced or torn up or whatever. I don't know if we've got a report on that or not. Uh, anyway, I, I, I would like, uh, if Sue's, if Sue's available, I'd like her to uh uh shed some light on that, uh, what's going on there uh with that, because it was, you know, it was all done uh, uh, six months ago.
Um, su- sure. Um, so it may be a little confusing as to the work that's going on right now on the Columbia Boulevard, the, the more westerly end of Columbia Boulevard. It doesn't have anything to do with the recent work that was done on Gable Road, which was completed just right at the end of Columbia Boulevard there. What's being done right now is just a sanitary sewer line extension by a single private developer who wants to build a home on a empty lot and eventually subdivide that lot um, making about, I believe, a total of four, four um building lots for future homes. So he's just extending the public sanitary sewer up that section of roadway. That roadway still does belong to Colum- uh Columbia County. It is not a city road at this time. So they're overseeing the permit and everything for that particular work. It doesn't impact the, the work that was already done on Gable Road. And you, um, eventually, in about probably a little less than a year from now, Columbia County will actually be replacing a culvert, as you mentioned, a culvert. Um, there is a storm culvert that passes under Columbia Boulevard, and they will be replacing that culvert as well, but that won't um impact the sewer work that is going on. They They did some coordination with that, that developer to make sure that those two projects would not conflict with each other.
True, will conflict with our, our sidewalk project there?
It doesn't conflict with the sidewalk, the, the sanitary sewer is on the opposite side of the road of where the new sidewalk will be. And then it's the same thing with the culvert. They're coordinating the culvert so that that can be done before the sidewalk is installed.
Okay. All right.
So it's been a good collaboration with Columbia County and their staff over there. They've been, they've been really great to work with, so we've had all these projects. Of course, anytime.
Okay, if you have little ones, bring them downtown, not this Saturday, next Saturday, do the drive through the plaza, let them see Santa, go watch some Christmas ships. If you've watched a whole round of Christmas ships, maybe you could back out and allow somebody else to see our next cycle because they do usually do like three loops down there. Especially if you're in the front row, if you could be courteous and, you know, you've got a great seat, you got there early, but if you've seen a whole round, maybe back out and let somebody else in. So just be courteous and be nice to one another and be thoughtful. It is that, it is the time of year, so with that, we are going to adjourn.
Good night.
Yep.